Sarah, can you promote me too, please?
Okay, the time is now 7:07 PM. And we've concluded the executive session and we've returned to the open meeting. And the executive session has been concluded. Will all participants in the executive session please state their names for the record? I will start with Robert.
Hi, Robert.
Michael Lawson.
Nina Williams and also Marcus McCaskin was, he just left.
Hillary Labar.
Kelly Case.
Frank Connors.
Catherine Nakai.
Rustina.
Karen Schmink.
Suzanne Leclair, and I will also state on behalf of
A. Anderson.
Thank you. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any manners not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now.
I have a concern. Issues were brought up that were not germane to the discussion. And you need me to specify what that was?
Can we just clarify the record? I believe that was at six, around sixty, six fifty-five, and just so that, you know, in terms of the timeframe, that
There was, there was two, though. There's one earlier as well, you might remember.
Okay, very good. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item, and that will be Pledge of Allegiance. All right, this evening, we have something great for the entire community. We have item three A, which is celebration of the recent selection of the Woodland Park High School Madrigals to attend the Western Slope Honor Choir Festival and being selected by the Colorado Music Educators Association to perform at their clinic. And we have the presenters, Jeff Harrington, the director of bands and choirs, here to introduce them for us. Hemmingson, I'm sorry.
Oh, you got it.
Just want to make sure, is that microphone on?
Hear me now?
Yes.
Right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. My name is Jeff Hemmingson, and I'm proud to be the director of Bands and Choirs at Woodland Park High School. I'm here to celebrate my group, The Madrigals. This year, we were asked by the president of the Vocal Chapter of the Colorado Music Educators Association to participate in a groundbreaking vocal clinic at the 2023 Colorado Music Educators Association Convention at the Broadmoor in Colorado Springs. We were asked to perform as part of a live clinic where other choir directors could watch the vocal headliner work with my students on two pieces of music in an effort to help those choir directors gain tools to take back to their classroom. Our vocal headliner was Chris Muntz from Kansas City, Missouri. We sang two pieces, one of which needed to be polished and the other needed to not be polished. The students had a wonderful performance and clinic. We also auditioned students for the Western Slope Honor Choir Festival, and that's something I do every year. This year, we had seventeen students get accepted into that Honor Choir Festival, which broke my previous record by seven. We also had one student get into Allstate Choir this year, and that's Ian Miller, who was one of our bases. He had a fantastic experience and phenomenal performance at Allstate this last Saturday at the Buell Theater in Denver, Colorado. So thank you so much for allowing me to brag on my students. Can we sing something for you?
Absolutely.
I also see some cheerleaders. Am I right? In the group. I think some of you are cheerleaders. Just you. Good job. I think you're an overachiever, right? So Mayor, can we have you come down and present them with mayor pins? We can have you turn, so now maybe your parents can see you. Kristen, do you want to picture the mayor with them and the fire director? You can smell that it's the mayor, right? I just gave you the pins. It's the mayor. Jeff? Do you know that didn't handle that this is Mayor Labar? Thank you. Thank you. Sarah? Erica Snether on.
All right. So it's nice to recognize not just the sports teams, but the arts as well. I'm glad we get to do both in our community. So we're off to four additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda. We have none. Five consent calendar. Counsel, are you comfortable taking all three? All right. Suzanne, if you'd like to present the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Labar. This evening, we have three items on the consent calendar. We have the December 2022 Statement of Expenditures, the January 2023 Statement of Expenditures, and the minutes from the February 2nd, 2023 council meeting. So I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. I'll second.
Thank you, counsel. You may vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion is passed unanimously.
All right, we are off to six public comments on items not on the agenda. Forget in the sheet, just give us a second.
Everybody that signed up this evening, Mayor, is for a particular agenda item.
Okay, perfect. No one on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And we are off to seven unfinished business. We have seven A, which is repeal or set for election ordinance 1431. And our presenter is also Suzanne for that.
Thank you, Mayor Labar. As counsel will recall, you passed an ordinance, ordinance number 1431, series 2022. The city clerk's office received nine letters of intent to circulate a petition. What that did at the time, that suspended that ordinance. We went through the whole petition process. The petitioners submitted their petition to the city clerk's office on December 27th, where the petition was deemed sufficient by the city clerk. They had, they needed 714 signatures. They had in excess of that, they had, let's see here, 837 signatures that were good and verified signatures. At the same time, when, once that petition was found to be sufficient, the city clerk's office received a protest notice, and we had a protest hearing, as counsel will recall. You appointed Judge Carlson to oversee that protest hearing, and that occurred on February 3rd, 2023. Following the hearing on February 3rd, Deputy Municipal Judge Ron Carlson issued his opinion and decision on February 8th, 2023. Judge Carlson stated the following. Therefore, I find the protest of the petitioners, the protesters should be denied for lack of substantial and competent evidence taken in the record as a whole. The clerk of the city of Woodland Park has done her job and is affirmed. The petitions are to be forwarded forthwith to the city council for action to repeal ordinance 1431, series 2022, or setting an election where the public dialogue can hopefully sort out the truth of the matter. Colorado revised statute 31111053 states, if a referendum petition is filed, the ordinance or part thereof protested against shall not take effect, and upon final determination of petition sufficiency, the legislative body shall promptly reconsider the ordinance. If upon, then it goes on, if upon reconsideration, the ordinance or part thereof protested is not repealed, the legislative body shall submit the measure to a vote of the registered electors at a regular or special election held not less than sixty days and not more than 150 days after the final determination of petition sufficiency. Therefore, this evening, the city council must decide to either repeal ordinance number 1431, series 2022, and discuss what the next steps will look like, or set it for an election. If the council decides to set this matter for an election, the sixty-day mark for the earliest date for this election is March 24th, and the 150th day mark for the latest date for the election would be June 22nd, 2023. The city clerk, myself, would like to recommend April 4th, 2023 as the election day, which is seventy-one days, and well within that time shall council choose to do that. So this evening, we are looking for a motion to either repeal ordinance 1431 or set it for election. If you decide to repeal ordinance 1431, once that motion is made, we're looking for discussion and guidance from council as to what the next steps would look like for that.
So Suzanne, do you have people signed up for this item?
I do. I have quite a few, Mayor.
Okay, so I think counsel, if it's all right with you, what I'd like to do is take public comment first, since whatever discussion we have, we make a motion that we need to direct staff. So I think it'd be quicker for the public to go ahead and have comments, and then we can have discussion and then give staff direction, if that's okay with you guys. It's fine with me. All right, so let's go ahead and start with that, then.
Okay, just, I just need one moment.
And David, I know you're online, so please don't forget to chime in if you have something to say, too, because I forget. I'm sorry.
And I am actually monitoring him as well as Suzanne.
Oh, good, okay, because I'm, I'm not on Zoom, so.
Our first speaker, ma'am, is Arnie Spartans.
Okay.
And he signed up online and is here with us this evening in the audience.
Always good to see that online system working. Thank you. Honorable mayor, city council. My name is Arnie Spartans, and I live in the Sunny Glen neighborhood. I just wanted to do a quick recap of how we got here. Ordinance 1431 defines short-term rental units in Woodland Park zoning code for the first time. STRs were added as lodgings use to the table of permitted uses in Title 18. This was important, important precedent-setting legislation. No matter how many smoke screens are thrown out by STR proponents, at the core, ordinance 1431 sets the precedence for allowing use of short-term rental units in residential districts, period. We all agree that good neighbor guidelines are needed, but they can't come at the irreparable cost of fundamental change to our zoning code. STR proponents, based on their public comments and in the recently filed protests, think the city's voters should ignore this fatal flaw at the core 1431, ordinance 1431. Thank goodness the city's voters are much smarter than that, and they care about their right to the peaceful use and enjoyment of their property. They care about their neighborhoods and the preservation of community character. They expect any zoning change would protect residential integrity and community character. Yes, those who sign the referendum petition are smart and they have rights. They are also your constituency that you were elected to represent. Yeah, so the city's voters, your constituents, have spoken very clearly with their call to repeal ordinance 1431. It's now up to city council to decide whether you choose to listen and understand why. Yes, community character matters. Yes, your constituents care about their homes and their neighborhoods. Yes, you have the opportunity to do the right thing. Thank you.
Mayor Labar, our next speaker is Maureen Johnson, and then Mary Stokowski is on deck.
Okay.
At the end, I'm, I'm not speaking of the one we're talking about. Does that matter?
You have.
I'm speaking about.
I do. Oh.
I'm speaking about 1439.
Okay, well, then we'll call you up when it's done. Yes, thank you. Mary, what have you come up?
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. My name's Mary Stokowski, and I'm a Woodland Park resident. First time coming up here without prepared comments. I really didn't know where I want to go with this, except to say that I urge the city council members to take this back, repeal it, and take it back to planning commission. We are finding, as we've spoken with a lot of people who signed the petition, that there's a lot of misinformation out there. There's a lot of confusion, and there's a lot of aspects of ordinance 1431 which are misunderstood. I think we all want something that's going to work really well in our community. We all care about our community, and we care about our neighborhoods. And I would urge you to have our city staff and the city Woodland Park to continue with the exploration of data. As stated in ordinance 1431, that we pull in actual information that is pertinent to this discussion, that we know about police, you know, house calls for violations or potential violations for disturbances in the neighborhoods, that we know who holds permits in our city and who are local owners who own investment properties or who are part-time residents who own investment properties or who are, in fact, corporate investors. There's been a lot of scare verbiage, if you will, of the group getting the petition signed to create a lot of misinformation. You know, corporate investors taking over neighborhoods. That's not happening. I think we do have to keep in mind, and I hope that you will keep in mind, that there is a high level of economic laws in place here of supply and demand. No neighborhood is being taken over by short-term rentals. It hasn't happened. It's not going to happen. There is a natural balance to this. And so I would encourage city council to please send this back to planning commission. Let us keep working together to come up with something that works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jean Harris, and then on deck, we have Carol Roberts.
Good evening. My name is Jean Harris. And the two speakers I've just heard, I kind of, I agree with what both of them have said in part. I would just like to address some of the smoke screens, misinformation, however you want to characterize it, from my perspective, have taken place here. On the February 1st courier, Mayor, you suggested that visitors are choosing STRs because people are living full-time in the city's motels. Well, you are correct. There's twelve of them, according to a letter that appeared in this week's courier, and I'm going to suggest that the research done for that letter is probably accurate as far as the number, or it wouldn't have been sent in. And I say that based on the source of that letter, the leadership at Caris Bible College. I doubt that many visitors to our town are not staying in motels because there's any number of Bible college students living in. I would venture to say they could care less who's staying in that motel, and there's certainly not a significant number of students taking up hotel space, motel space. There's twelve of them. Maybe that number's gone up or down at this point. I'm not sure. I'm going to make some suggestions that it might be time for some more Deanne Bettermans and Don Disellums to be installed in different positions within the city government. Maybe the next election, we might see a change. And I'm also going to suggest that, once again, I'm going to suggest that the character of people living in motels, because perhaps they can't afford to live anywhere else, has been harmed, contrary to the mayor's comment that her job is to prevent the government from harming you. So I, too, I'm asking you to repeal this ordinance, and last speaker, it seems like that might be a good thing to do, is send it back and figure out some details and come up with a better solution that everybody can live with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carol Roberts, I just want to check the mic for you.
Good counsel. My name is Carol Roberts, and I reside in the Sunny Glen neighborhood of Woodland Park. I've been a resident of Woodland Park for 26 years. I have participated in the recent petition concerning the short-term rentals. Maintaining the character of residential neighborhoods was the biggest concern expressed to me as I spoke to the residents. This lines up with the STR survey results. I would like to share with you some of the comments I heard from those who signed my petition. A young couple with two young children resides on Spruce Street. They said that there were four STRs that they knew of in their vicinity, and in their opinion, it was changing the feel of their neighborhood. They said it did not feel as safe or as friendly as when they first purchased their home on Spruce Street. I spoke with six residents on Elizon Road. The first couple told me they have an STR next door, and it is owned by a millionaire Texas investor. He bought the house to use it as an STR, and it is rented frequently. He does not seem to have any interest in what effect this STR has on his quiet neighborhood. They miss not having an actual long-term neighbor in that home. They stated that their neighborhood is a quiet neighborhood where they all know and care for one another, and this STR has also caused some privacy issues for them as well. A young mother stated that she homeschools her children, and the same STR on this street causes her concern about the safety of her children with more traffic and strangers that are staying in this STR across from her. Another resident said she actually owns an STR in a more commercial area of Woodland Park, and she agrees that STRs should be significantly limited in residential neighborhoods. The fourth couple said that the same STR is very disturbing to their quiet street. The neighbors all know one another, and they even share their eggs with their neighbors. They stated that STRs should not be permitted in residential neighborhoods because of the disruption of this sense of community and fellowship. I spoke with several of my neighbors on Morning Sun Drive, Sun Court, and Sun Valley. Six couples signed my petition, and two other couples had already signed another collector's petition. One couple said they were very concerned about fire danger from short-term renters who have no obligation to the safety of neighborhoods and do not understand our extreme fire and do not understand our extreme fire alerts, which could possibly cause a fire disaster. Another stated that S T R should not be allowed to disrupt the sense of community, especially in residential neighborhoods, and that it reduces the opportunity of making new friends with permanent residents. They did not want the disruption from traffic and noise. They stated that the reason they live in a residential neighborhood is to enjoy their neighbors and to live in a safe and quiet environment. Another couple feels that the S T Rs would dilute the cohesiveness and sense of community in residential neighborhood, where neighbors become invaluable friends, care and support one another and help one another in times of need. Neighborhood character is far more important than just the property maintenance and the appearance. This character is woven together by relationships developed over time. Especially when we share in the lives of those who are neighbors and friends. This character of which I speak is invaluable, invaluable asset in Woodland Park. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Tim Northrop.
All right, awesome. Thank you. My name's Tim Northrup on Golden Court. Madam Mayor, City Council and City Staff, I do thank you for the work that you do keep the city running. And I hope you will endeavor to be yoked with the citizens in planning for a bright future. As you may recall, last month I presented to you a short-term rental decision matrix. It was about this wide. That matrix clearly showed the path that we can all proceed on as a short-term rental management ordinance is put in place. That path is also the quickest and the easiest, where we will repeal fourteen thirty one and put forth an ordinance that represents the interests of the majority of your citizens, that within residential zoning districts only allow S T Rs in primary residences and in commercial zoning districts, S T Rs in non-primary residences. Any other path that's taken can be long and would be drawn out for months. Unfortunately, with thousands of taxpayer dollars and city staff hours wasted. Remember that we only had a limited amount of time to contact the citizens for the referendum petition. And any future petition for a citizens initiative to put forth their own ordinance in place would allow us almost five times the amount of time, amount of days before to contact the neighbors for their support. The decision back on November seventeenth came after a much complicated decision with amendments within amendments. That quick decision clearly supported the S T R business owners to the detriment of the citizens of Woodland Park. Your oath of office has clearly shown in the ordinance fourteen thirty one in one of the whereas statements. Whereas in order to protect residential integrity and community character within the city, the council finds and determines it is necessary to adopt licensing regulations and restrictions on short-term rentals. We all agree on that whereas statement, but the ordinance actually did. It would destroy our residential integrity and character in the community. And that's why the citizens vetoed it. The citizens want you to put an ordinance in place that will protect the character of their neighborhoods. Together, let's do that.
Thank you. Next, we have Jerry Penland.
My name is Jerry Penland, Masters Drive. On November the seventeenth, you made a decision to support S T R proponents instead of most of your voters. When that happened, a grassroots effort was started that resulted in taking back some of the power we gave you to make decisions for us. We took that power back by way of our right to move to a direct democratic process. Going to a referendum petition like we did is uncommon and usually doesn't result in success. Unless what the government officials did would result in a major negative impact on the lives of their voters for a long, long time. That's why we were so successful. It's a major mistake to think that your voters are so naive that they would fall for misinformation. It's a major mistake to think your voters are so unintelligent that they can't read an ordinance and know what it will mean to them personally if it becomes law. We continue to hear how great ordinance fourteen thirty one is because it has regulations to deal with short-term rental problems. The problems that fourteen thirty one were going to deal with are caused by non-primary resident short-term rentals operating in our residential neighborhoods. Without those S T Rs, regulation to deal with the problems they cause will not even be necessary. Even after our efforts and our success was officially protested, out of eight hundred and thirty-seven validated signatures, not one person showed up at the protest hearing to take their signature off our petition. Any thoughts about petition remorse? Or a fabrication of someone's imagination as proven by the protest hearing, where not one signature was deleted. Not one signature was disqualified by the hearing officer, who said, as Suzanne already said, the protest was denied for lack of substantial and competent evidence. Do the math. Eight hundred and thirty-seven votes represents two-thirds of the number of votes needed to win any, any type of election in Woodland Park. This is a defining moment in our city. The question each of you needs to answer is, will you continue to side with the short-term rental proponents? Wanting to force us to live with non-primary resident short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods? Or will you decide to side with your voters? Each one of you will soon make your individual decision, a part of Woodland Park history. Every single voter now and forever will know how you voted. I'm talking about a vote pertaining to the heart and soul of our city, maintaining the character of our neighborhoods. Will the record show that you stood with the citizens of Woodland Park? Or will your voters have to pass a protective ordinance without you? Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that we have signed up.
Counsel, comments, questions?
I'd like to make a motion to repeal ordinance fourteen thirty-one, series twenty-two.
Did you get it, Rusty? You can have it.
I'll second it. Jinx on you.
I have a motion from Connors and who got the second? And the second from Councilmember Neil. Counsel, you may vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously to repeal ordinance number fourteen thirty-one. So now we need to talk about next steps.
Are you going to continue?
I think we should have put it off.
I would like to propose we schedule a meeting and appropriate amount of time. I don't think tonight's enough time to discuss the path forward.
So you want to table it until the next meeting then?
Before we table it, let's just say, what's, what's some of the options we have? Option number one, we could do nothing, right? We could do nothing.
That is option one.
That is one option. Option number two is we could send it to the planning commission. Option three would be those who protested this ordinance could send a desired ordinance to planning to kick off the discussion, to say, okay, this is what you want to see. Run it through, run it back through the, the process again and see whether that works.
That's up to planning.
And it still takes another meeting.
I'm just saying what the options are. I didn't say we have to just.
Our options are send it back to planning, do nothing, or if, if anything to do with planning though, by the public has, that's directly between them, so.
Well, and it would provide a great opportunity for more, for public hearing, certainly, yeah. As would it, whatever the planning commission does would come back to council and there would be even more public hearing. And, and they could even have the option of having work sessions. I mean, there's all kinds of options that the planning commission could do. And I, I think.
Dina?
Oh, I just want to reiterate that because it's changed to Title eighteen, any changes need to go through planning commission first, recommendation.
Yeah, and, and I don't have any problem with any of the option of sending it back to planning. The only thing is we have a moratorium that's going to expire more than likely before we get where we need to go. I mean, because we have to have an ordinance in place by May first, just to do the, the four meetings for public.
Can we address it then?
We can, I'm done.
We don't need to do anything about.
I'm just.
Because that goes through June.
It's, yeah, it goes through June, but they have basically two to four meetings between now and when we would have to have the first public hearing for planning, which would be May, would be the first meeting in May.
Counsel, we could send back the planning commission ordinance to them for a starting point for them to work from. I think that's, it's a good place to start instead of white paper.
Catherine, you brought up a good point. That the moratorium is going to expire. So it's changed now. The, the sentiment that came to take this off the table and go and like start again or whatever makes it clear that the issuing of those licenses is problematic. And so I'd suggest that we probably need to extend that moratorium and again until such time as we get clear on what the direction will be.
Well, and it kind of goes to Ms. Sikowski's comment about trying to get more data. If we're trying to get more data, we're not going to get that in two months. So I, you know, I don't, I'm just throwing it out there. We can do what we need to do in May if we need to.
Rusty?
Planning Commission, hopefully the planning commission reviews the, the discussions that the council has had over the many weeks of meetings, council meetings. They listened to the thoughts of the council members so that they can kind of see what the council was thinking when they tried to make some tweaks to the original recommendation that came forward and, and, you know. I hope we don't start from scratch because there's been a lot of input. It would be an inconvenience to have all the same people going back to the same meetings. I would just hope that they would reflect on the, the information that they currently have.
Plus all that public dialogue that happened in work sessions and workshops and
Correct.
many different facets.
There has been so many different facets that they could go back and review. Come back with a recommendation that more closely aligns with what hopefully four-plus council members would agree to.
Well, and there's a lot of community out there. I mean, we have eighty-two hundred residents.
Correct.
And, and it's not just voters that we have to consider. We have to consider all of our residents.
Correct.
Absolutely. Let me just chime in real quick. David, are you online? Do you have any feedback? I mean, I know he's online. All right, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't.
Can I ask Nina a question? So Nina, from the way this is on our agenda, are we able to take an action step? Can like one of us make a motion to send it back to planning? Is that appropriate in the languaging of the notice we have before?
Please, so because it says next steps, and then it's going to go through the public process in front of planning and then back in front of you. Michael.
So, and if I may, counsel, there's been a great deal said in the community by this body, by, by others over the past several months. Among staff, we've had a lot of conversation on what is, is there any initial direction that the council may wish to give the planning commission at this time? I, I don't know if there is consensus around any one particular thing. We had batted around the idea of a work session to have you all articulate what that might be.
That's, that's exactly what I was talking about.
So just in the interest of moving expeditiously and with the, for the sake of clarity, you might consider, if, if you think that you can afford the time coming back, doing a work session here soon and giving whatever high-level guidelines or as deep as you want to go to help guide that conversation.
I would, I think that's an excellent suggestion, Michael.
Do we have a calendar date anybody would be interested in? Because I can certainly make a motion that we table this to a work session on February.
March, March. Sixteenth, April sixth.
Procedures.
We, if you really want to do it, the next meeting, we can bump that. Or you can do a special one. So.
The rules and procedures.
So the March second, we will, we will change it from a rules and procedures session to a S T R work session. Is that what? With the planning commission, okay.
I would agree.
So you making that motion?
I'll make that motion that we.
Do a joint one with or just do it that, just do.
I, I was thinking just the council. And, you know, planning commission, of course, can attend.
Yeah.
But just for the sake of moving along and make it very clear for this board to make its voice heard.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the microphone issue there, I guess. Yeah, sounds good to me.
Great.
Okay, I can make that motion all together, or do we have a second? All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have Connors making the motion to schedule a work session for March second with the council to review sending ordinance fourteen thirty-one back to planning commission. With the second, I think it was ought.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, counsel, you may vote.
And just to be clear, I'd just like to make a, to say that ordinance fourteen thirty-one, as it was passed, has been repealed. This is a revisiting of the original planning commission ordinance for discussion and consideration. Correct. So just general S T R regulation.
Yes.
Then we have like two years before this fourteen thirty-one.
No.
You don't have that in our charter. That's another.
That would be if a, that's a citizens initiative. It cannot be challenged for two years.
Okay.
Just to make it clear that fourteen thirty-one is gone.
That motion's passed unanimously.
Thank you.
So is that like six? You'll, you'll tell us.
Yeah, we'll decide on a time. Michael and I will figure out, we'll probably need more time for this. Five o'clock, are you saying?
Five?
Yeah.
Can't stay up late.
All right, we're going to move on to item eight, which is ordinances on initial posting. We're going to start with eight A, consider ordinance number fourteen forty. And also, counsel, if you're all right with that, I'd like to combine eight A with is it ten A? Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, so that we can go ahead and get, get both those things done. And Kim's our presenter.
Thank you, counsel. Before counsel tonight on initial posting is a Twin Lake water share. And the ten A item is the contract for that share. The reason for the two motions are the water shares are considered both personal and real property. Counsel has to accept real property via ordinance and we kind of memorialize. We kind of memorialize the the contract with the resolution for the personal property side of things, so. Um, before you tonight is one twin lake share. This is our most valuable water. Um, this is our fully consumable water that makes it legal for us to pump our local sources. And we'll say this does not expand our population. This only secures our future. Uh, with uh, not growing uh, our water portfolio in regards to a population. Um, over the years, these shares produce less water. Therefore, we need more shares to for uh, to produce more water. Um, over time. So uh, before you tonight is ordinance fourteen forty on initial posting. Um, and set the public hearing for March second and resolution eight ninety nine, uh, approving the contract for the purchase.
Individually.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we'll look, we'll do the motions individually, but.
Okay. You taking comments or asking?
I, Suzanne, has anyone signed up for this one?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion then?
I'll make a motion to.
Question before you make.
Sure, okay.
So, um, keep these these water shares now, um. Just for the public's benefit, they've increased quite substantially, haven't they? This is the last time you purchased them.
They have.
I'm gonna talk about them.
Um, we were, uh, I would say it's about fifteen thousand dollars more than last time. Um, for numerous reasons, uh, this is a shareholder that we've worked with in the past. Uh, we did miss out on a couple other shares, uh, just because we're not going to be in the market to increase the cost of these. Um, the relationships that we've developed with folks to where if they're gonna sell these, we can offer a fair price and they don't shop us around. Cause that's what's happening now. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen forty series twenty twenty three. As presented and set the public hearing for March second twenty twenty three, not twenty two.
I'll second it. Okay, David seconded it, and I do hope the public has been paying attention to what's going on with water. Out west.
And if I can also mention anybody who's thinking of staying or not, we're gonna have reports later and. We've asked Kip to talk about our reservoir, so. Or the intent of reservoir.
Okay, council, you may vote on ordinance fourteen forty, please. Council member Connors, I'm waiting for your vote.
I think, yeah.
That's my turn.
That's a nice.
That's what I.
Thank you, council, motion on ordinance fourteen forty has passed unanimously. We now need to do resolution number.
Okay, so I'll I'll make a motion to approve resolution number eight ninety nine, series twenty twenty three, authorizing the purchase of water shares. From certain sellers.
I'll second it.
That was council member Nakai and council member Neil with the second. Council, you may vote. Thank you, council, motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we're off to nine A. We are on approval of the change of location of the beer and wine liquor license for AJ's Pizzeria. And Suzanne's presented for that.
Thank you, mayor. Before council this evening, you, this is the first time I think council's seen one of these, a change of location for a liquor license. And I think each and every one of you has seen the beautiful new addition to town of AJ's Pizza right on Highway twenty four. And Aaron Melvick is here with us this evening. He is here, he'll talk to you, he'll tell you what he's doing and all. We are just looking for. An approval to change the location of his liquor license. His application meets all of the requirements necessary needed. Fees have been paid. Background check was not an issue and it already had already been done. He needed a petition. He did do the petition. And he is good to go. So maybe Aaron wants to tell you a little bit about what he's doing.
Hi, guys, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, well, kind of to start the show off, this is not a new thing for us. We've had a liquor license for about ten years now and. And we're really proud that we haven't had any situations of distributing to minors, anything of that nature. Uh, this is also something we do take seriously. Uh, we tend to do most of our liquor sales. Uh, in kind of a dual control environment where we kind of have the management staff kind of keep an eye on those that are. Actually distributing the alcohol, making sure that we're meeting all those requirements. And uh, other than that, there's, there's a strong reason why we're not going for. Shall I say hard alcohol? We want to keep it just beer and wine. We're a, we're more of a family type restaurant. We don't want to go there if that kind of makes sense. So with this in mind, we're just asking to move it from our old location to our new one. And uh, I am a hundred percent available if anybody would like to say anything or has any concerns, we we care, so thanks, guys.
Thank you. Counsel.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Absolutely.
What time do you close tonight? And and if we pass this is, what time do you close tonight?
We're we're open till ten o'clock tonight, but we'll we'll stay around if you guys are still hungry and I might have to wait for the license to go through for. If you want a beer with pizza tonight.
I would like to make a motion that we approve change of location.
We need to talk about a uh, a social event scheduled there after council meeting next time.
I'll second that motion, so we can.
I have a question for you.
We have to do.
So Mike, my question is, um, this is to make your license effective at your new location, correct?
That is correct. So we had a license at the old location and we've been functioning for about ten years with that license.
Right.
But this is just permission to move it from pretty much the old location to the new location.
Is that already open now? So have you made that transition?
We have the location open. We are unable to sell beer and wine at this moment, uh, until we have approval naturally. We uh, we have all the systems online, but we we definitely want to make sure we have permission first.
Okay, Suzanne often does a swearing in right here, so you might have that worked out.
We have to also get state approval. So we're just the local approval and then there's the state approval.
Okay, Suzanne, do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
I do not.
Okay, now can I have a motion, counsel?
Go ahead, Frank.
Alright, thank you. Uh, pizza guy, what can I say? Approval, I would like to make a motion to approve the change of location of the beer wine liquor license of AJ's Pizzeria to. From the current location at Gold Hill to the new location at two fifty East Highway twenty four Woodland Park.
I'll second.
Thank you, council, you may vote. Boy, that was quick. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. And on a side note, it's good seeing you, guys.
Thanks.
Great looking place you got there.
Well, thanks. We'll be happy to have you guys.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item nine B. That's approve ordinance, approval of ordinance fourteen thirty six series twenty twenty three and. Our, oh, or, I don't remember your name, I apologize. Yeah, the the.
CJ.
Or CJ.
Mayor, yep.
You'll you'll get up here enough times, I'll remember.
Yeah, that's okay. This is, I think, second time being up here, so. Thank you, guys, again for having me, counsel. Again, my name is CJ Gates. Uh, the item in front of you is a zoning ordinance change. Um, by the applicants of Beer Garden Lane LLC and Park Contractor Storage. Uh, to add additional parcels into the Woodland Station Overlay District. The subject properties in question are located in the heart of downtown Woodland Park, south of Midland Avenue. And west of south, or I'm sorry, west of southwest street. The properties in question are zone central business district. The overall appearance and function of the development within the Woodland Station Overlay District is to be compatible with the existing structures in the area. And is to be in harmony with the character of Woodland Park. In addition, resolution number six seven seven. Was passed to provide design guidelines within the boundary of Woodland Station Mixed Use Development. Per Woodland Park Code, the purpose of the Woodland Station Overlay District Regulations. Is to promote important community qualities with the overlay district by allowing flexibility. Uh, in applying for development within the CBD Zone District. Chapter eighteen point three one of the Woodland Park Code lays out the benefits of the overlay district. Which allow the developer to submit a site plan for administrative review for all uses within the CBD District. Including conditional uses such as residential occupancies. The developer is allowed to propose parking ratios, setback, and height standards. The purpose of the overlay district is to allow for flexibility in applying. To the CBD District and create a village-like character that is pedestrian-friendly and a vibrant business environment. On this current slide, you will see how the current Woodland Station Overlay District is laid out. On the current slide is an aerial photos of the prop of the properties in question. The purple, the parcels that the applicant are requesting to be added to the overlay district are outlined in yellow. Parcels labeled one, two, three, four, and five. Beer Garden Lane Development LLC is the owners of parcels one and two. Park Contractor Storage LLC is the owners of parcels labeled three, four, and five. The city of Woodland Park are the are the owners of the parcels outlined in blue, which are A and B. Public notice and referral requirements have been met. The application was referred to the city entities listed on the slide and the only comment was received was a no comment. From the City of Woodland Park Utilities Department. The map you see on the screen here is the future land use map that is within the Woodland Park Comprehensive Master Plan. The properties in question are with the downtown mixed-use area. Amendments to Title eighteen are regulated by Woodland Park Municipal Code and the City Charter. It is staff's policy to use the following review criteria when considering overlay zone district applications. Is the proposed zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan map? The twenty thirty Woodland Park Future Land Use Map, as seen on the previous slide, identifies identifies the subject properties as downtown mixed use. Uh, which results in the comprehensive master plan not to be updated. This does comply, uh, and specifically land use and growth growth goal one and land use growth objective one point one. Have changes occurred in the surrounding properties that warrant a change in classification? Currently, no development project for the subject properties have been submitted. But the Woodland Park DDA has been in conversation with a developer interested in developing the D D D D owned parcel to the east. Is the addition of the Woodland Station Overlay District appropriate at this location? Staff agreed that it is, yes, it is appropriate. The properties in question are continuous with the current boundary of the overlay district. As well as parcels one and two on the previous slide have previously been included within the overlay district. Can this rezone be uh, served with planned water resources? Staff says, yes, the underlying zone still remains in place and the addition of the overlay will have no net effect on water usage. Can this rezone serve with wastewater treatment resources? Wastewater treatment capacity to serve the proposed zoning change is available and adequate for present and future needs. The planning commission, public hearing occurred on January twelfth of twenty twenty three. The planning commission unanimously unanimously recommended approval of the draft ordinance number fourteen thirty six, series two thousand twenty three. This concludes my presentation, counsel. I'm available for any questions and we also have an applicant representative. Uh, here in the audience, if you guys have any questions for him as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, CJ. Counsel, questions?
I have.
Sure.
Uh, I have a question for the applicant. Okay.
Should present first if he has a presentation. Did you? Mr. Weatherford, did you bring a presentation with you today by chance? Okay.
No. A fine job presenting. Uh, I guess I would add, uh, one of the motivations to to do this is. For fifteen plus years, I've been frustrated by the grand plans that get um. Shown for the this downtown area. And in many cases, drawing plans on top of parcels that are not owned by the people making the plans and without the. I'll say consent of the the landowners who had no intention of selling. So it was uh, my intention is step one, get these parcels under control that they could be. Put in with the overlay district and then work with uh, master developer. Who, uh, and it's intended to tie in with the the Tabah House people, uh, to. Master plan the whole area and do it under one set of rules.
Very good. Okay, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Weatherford, um, my first question is. Wasn't your property uh, in the overlay district once before?
When we purchased the property, it was not in the overlay district. And as soon as we purchased it, and that was in October of two thousand thirteen, this is the Americas parcel. We applied to put it in the overlay district.
So how come you're re, uh, what happened? Why aren't, why did you take it out of the district at that time?
I, out of the district because we got, um. Say sideways with the DDA people, which led to the lawsuit. And so based on that, uh. I'm just trying to be really polite here. Based on what happened, we pulled out and said, we we don't want to be part of this overlay district dealing with the DDA. We'd be better off just being zoned separately. But that was quite a while ago. That was. Two thousand sixteen. So we've had quite a change here and we've got different people involved and different. Uh, people that want to build something here, so it's a new day. That's that's why we're back.
So in, uh, you're you're now part of the board of the DDA, correct? So what I find uh, challenging here is. Within six months of that app of you being appointed to the board, you purchased three more pieces of property. In that areas and now you're wanting all these included? And do you? Are you okay with the fact, I don't have a problem with, as a businessman, you making a profit and figuring out something in that regard? I have a huge problem. The city last April. Um, strengthened our conflict of interest, the the concern to the public of conflict of interest was very strong, so much so they voted. To strengthen it. You are on the DDA, you've purchased adjacent property. And I would contend that you may have not aware of the boundaries you're stepping over. In terms of the public interest on that property.
I'm very much aware of the boundaries, Mr. Subalaga. And so you want to grandstand here publicly and try to make me look bad. This has been hashed out at the DDA with the lawyers involved. I've recused myself from anything to do with this property and these rezonings and with the Tabah House people. I've done it right and it's been scrutinized, so.
As the city council has on, I will also to the public testify and I'll do it under oath. He has recused himself from every discussion. And every vote, he has been completely uninvolved with any discussions that the DDA board has conducted. I know there is some contentious between certain individuals and I want the public to know. That the current DDA board is monitoring that situation closely and we will not tolerate it. The chairman is an honorable man and he is running a ethical DDA board. Thank you.
That's all, that's all good, Rusty. My concern. That's all, that's all good, Rusty. My concern is that if you are in a property owner developing right there, and now you want it in the overlay district, well, that's your job. Do that. Step out, re- not just recuse yourself from this show. You are involved in knowing about all of the pieces that other people in the public are not available to know about. And I am suggesting, I have a problem saying yes to you to make this part of the overlay district while you're a serving member on the DDA. Choose what you want to be. Choose to be a business developer, an investor, or choose to be on the DDA, and obviously you've already chosen. So I, I'm saying I have a problem with the ethics of me upholding my constitutional and my charter oath to the people of Woodland Park when you present this to me with that divided, um, ally, allegiance.
So I'm going to interrupt here real quick. Um, Councilmember Zuluaga, you've stated your concern.
I have.
And you can reflect that in your vote.
I will.
And Mr. Weatherford, you've stated that you've done everything ethically required by the DDA, and the attorneys have been involved. So I'm going to let it end there. And Council, if there are any further questions or comments, or by, um, Councilmember Ott. And then we also saw public comments, so I don't know if there is anyone signed up for this topic.
There is not.
Okay. So Council, if you have no further questions or comments, then I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion.
I move that we deny this, um, this motion or this inclusion of this piece of property in the, uh, downtown overlay district, the DDA overlay district.
I, I do not hear a second, so motion fails.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen thirty-six, series twenty twenty-three, as presented. Frank seconded.
Who got the second on that one?
It's one of the drags being on Zoom.
David, I think that might be your dog. Uh, you're the only one with the microphone off.
Yeah, I got a golden puppy that we adopted and, uh, she's tenacious.
Thank you. Council motion has passed six-one with Councilmember Zuluaga voting no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Hey, we're moving on to C. That's ordinance fourteen thirty-eight, and Suzanne is the presenter for that one.
Thank you, Council. As Council will recognize, we do this every year. We have to declare the instrument that we will use to post our public notices. As in past years, the city clerk's office is asking that we use the city website for our publications. Uh, currently, it's just a little tidbit that we want to always bring to you. Earlier this evening, when we were talking about the STRs on, uh, Facebook and Zoom, we had about fifty people watching. We had about, um, twenty-four on Zoom and about twenty on Facebook, somewhere in that. Right now, it's a little bit lower, and we currently have about ten people on Zoom and four people on Facebook watching the council meeting. So I would just ask that Council approve ordinance number fourteen thirty-eight, declaring the instrument for public notification process as the city website.
Do we do discussion or are we just moving in?
You can do whatever.
Just, just a.
Just do whatever you want.
Is, is there, what's the cost associated with our?
Yeah.
That's all I want to.
With the website, this is why we went to the website. In past years, we were using the local paper, and it was costing the clerk's office about forty-five hundred dollars a year to do these public notices. In addition to the cost was the time constraints. Our, as all of you know, um, and no offense to the Courier, with all due respect, it is a weekly paper. So in order for us to put something in the paper, not only does it come out once a week, but we have to have it to them a week prior to that. And so the time constraints were very difficult. If, you know, we had something that we had delayed and we needed to post, we wouldn't be able to get that through with the newspaper. So we went to the website because it was free, and it was a faster way for us to be able to post our notices.
Thank you.
And my only other question is, so if the electronics go down, what's your backup so you fulfill the notice requirements?
If.
The website's down or whatever.
It's a great question. I mean, it never goes down for more than a half an hour at a time. And I don't know if City Manager Lawson wants to talk more about the website.
No, I, I, I mean, that's true. I mean, I don't know how many nines are in our uptime, uh, for the website, but we usually post the Thursday before the meeting on the following Tuesday. The bare minimum is twenty-four hours before the meeting time, and so there's, there's a pretty good buffer there with which to work. If the worst absolutely happened, we would figure it out and let you know.
Put a note back on the door.
We'll tape it to the door.
Yeah, um, Michael, I thought the process was, and, and the reason I'm offering this up is the DDA went through this decision of how we would post. We were trying to follow what the city does. And I think the backup plan is we do go back to a, um, posting, a physical posting on the city hall. Um, I do not believe we go to three sites, but we do have the one site that's physically posted, which is here.
We don't have that codified. In the ordinance, we just have the website as codified, but we do, we would do, in that event, we would do anything possible to get that notice out so people could see in that event.
And I would imagine we would do social media. We would do what's up with the park. Um, we, we have some other backups, but some, something about. We're going to put Frank up on the roof and scream it out.
You could hear him. Okay, Suzanne, do you have anyone signed up for this one?
I do not.
Okay. Council, ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen thirty-eight, series twenty twenty-three, and ordinance declaring the instrument for public notification process and method for the city of Woodland Park for the year twenty twenty-three.
I'll second. David, you can have it.
So, okay.
Are you, are you relinquishing your second?
It's a piece of pizza.
I have a first by Councilmember Neil, a second by Councilmember Ott, and Council, you may vote. Thank you, Council. Motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have, um, item D, and if Council is comfortable, I'd also like to combine item ten C with D. Uh, we'll vote separately, but hear them together. And no one's paying attention, so we're just going to go ahead and do that.
I don't, yeah.
So, I don't hear objections. So we've got approval of ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine, and our city attorney Nina Williams is the presenter.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council, this is an ordinance to men title five of our city code, and it's regarding small cell facilities, and it's to establish a procedure, um, that currently does not exist in the code or in the city for the application, reviewing, and citing of these small cell facilities. Um, there's been, uh, passed down from the FCC and our state and, uh, state statutes uh, regarding what we are able to do regulating small cells. This ordinance reflects, um, the maximum that the city can do to, um, to, uh, deal with restrictions as to small cell facilities such as co-location, um, where they, where they could um, be located and procedures for review as well as, um, you know, the at work, what needs to be in the application and where they need to, you know, design standards that we're permitted to do pers- pers- uh, pers- pursuant to, um, federal and state laws such as height limitation, concealment, um, separation, where, when they're in residential properties. Um, I'm open for any questions, and this is also a public hearing just for, to know.
Okay, Council.
When it's your turn.
So, so.
Sure.
Okay. So Nina, um, we have talked about this, uh, offline. But from what I understand, the, what you've brought before us is the best we can do as a city to protect the citizens.
Correct.
The concern I have is that the FCC is run by five unelected board members. And the last time that cell phone tower safety was examined was nineteen ninety-four. So now we are being asked as a city to put up microcell towers little for the five G every five hundred feet throughout our city. That concerns me for the safety, the health, the privacy of our citizens. It deeply concerns me that legally, the best thing we can do is to determine location procedures and applications. I thought we were a charter. We have our own charter because we can protect our citizens, and yet we've got an unelected federal government telling us what we can do. I know there's a lot of successful lobbyists in this space. But I'm concerned for your health. And it concerns me, sometimes we just have to say, we will say no. We don't want to have any cell towers and sue us. There's been no discussion at a federal level. The state's just gone ahead, probably because of our lobbyists. And so my question is, if we said no, and we created an ordinance which said no five G cell towers in Woodland Park, what would that bring upon us as a city?
Uh, yes, I would, that, I understand your question. That would bring, um, well, you know, lawsuits, possibly lawsuits in the state court and federal courts. Um, whereas well as these rules are well established, and just the way our government is, is operated is that, you know, the national regulations on things that are nationwide have been held to govern, you know, what's, the, the governments below them. And in the state legislature, in the same way, um, areas of what they call state concern, uh, Trump issues of municipalities. So what this ordinance does right now, there's no restrictions. It, it, it does the most that we can do. Um, but yeah, there would be lawsuits, we would definitely lose those lawsuits because it's well established that these areas of telecommunications are governed, um, by the FCC and then also by the state statutes.
I would just bring to mind what happened this week in Ohio. We have a federal agency, unelected officials in the EPA, telling the people in Ohio after they exploded their, uh, tanks that fell off, went off the rail track, that it was safe to go back into their homes and just don't drink the water, drink bottled water. And folks went to their homes and saw dead fish all through the river. The EPA is supposed to regulate that. How are we supposed to have confidence with unelected federal agencies telling Woodland Park what to do? When we're guaranteed in the Constitution representative form of government, that's not representative.
Oh, you don't have an answer.
Yeah, you're, you're, your job for us, I'm not putting you on the spot personally, please, but is to, for us to uphold our constitutional oaths, both to the federal level, to a state level.
Right.
And the Charter of Woodland Park, so.
Right, so my interpretation is that you follow, you, you took, all took an oath to follow the United States, uh, laws and the state laws. Um, I understand your position and policy. I'm not going to argue with, with you. We just decide, we, we, we see what comes down as our attorneys. We also need to follow the law that's above us, and we see what came down, and we've drafted this ordinance in consultation with, um, Ken Thelman, who is, um, has helped all the, you know, a lot of the municipalities. He's an expert in this field. Um, what's the most we can do to protect our municipality? So that's, to, to not do anything, um, is, you know, I mean, this, these are little things that we could do. We're presenting it to you just because we, we try to protect the city within the confines that we can, and the oath that I take as an attorney to, you know, follow certain laws, but I'm not diminishing your, you know, policy concerns, of course.
So one last concern specifically with cell towers. Friend of mine is a radio, uh, guy from the military, and he says that they did, the Popular Science Magazine did an experiment with, um, uh, radio frequencies. And they flashed red, green, and nothing on the screen. And then they projected frequencies to the folks taking the test. And they put a frequency out on the blank screen. And the person's mind was messed with, so they chose red. Or they chose green. They did this repeatedly. And the point about it is that once you have these small cell towers everywhere, the frequencies, the sounds, all sorts of things that can go from there can manipulate the human psyche, and that concerns me. There's a privacy issue. There's also uh, health issues. So I just want to lay that out to recognize that we're making a policy now. There's no five G cell towers in Woodland Park right now. And we're making, we will be voting here that will cause this to move in to your city, probably first on the main roads, and then into every neighborhood. And that's what we're going to have to live with unless we say no. That's the end of my comment.
I'm just, and just to clarify, if they came in, um, today without the ordinance, they would be permitted to unless, in, uh, unless you.
Create an ordinance that says no, right.
And go ahead.
Uh, just additional comment because, uh, Councilmember Zuluaga, you did share an article with us. And I guess my engineering background in IT kicked in. I did my own research because the article was a credible article that, uh, Mr. Zuluaga did, uh, distribute. It did not have any conclusion in it that it was, um, a health risk or safe. It, there is no definitive correlation. So I went to the World Health Organization and did research there. I went to National Institute of Health. Two fairly well-known organizations in the health industries. They, their official position is five G is considered safe. Um, now, that's from the health perspective. As a IT engineer, I also started reading articles from, um, electrical engineers who have done extensive studying on two G, three G, four G. And ju- just for a reference point, because this is a very important decision, and I get it. Two G, three G, four G is more powerful and more damaging than five G could be based on engineering science on the electromagnetic spectrum. It's, it, it broadcasts at a far more powerful le- level. What we're talking about is a shift to the right is what it's normally considered, a higher gigahertz, and if there was any, um, uh, adverse effect, it was first, um, reported by the FAA. So I did some research on what was this danger to the FAA, and it turns out that the fact, the frequency spectrum of the five G is between four point oh and four point two gigahertz. Altimeters operate at four point four gigahertz, so there's a two gigahertz difference. What the FAA initially received was all kinds of concerns from pilots that their altimeters were going to be thrown off. They did a, a thorough investigation on, uh, commercial airlines and found that the older uh, altimeters, but ten percent of them did not have a filter in the, uh, altimeter that would filter out the lower frequency bands, um, and they were in fact being affected. They have been fixing that ten percent. They have, the FAA has come out, all newer altimeters are considered safe, so it doesn't interfere. So I did that kind of research to find out why there was this opposition to five G. Right now, it's inconclusive, um, that it's, it's going to affect your health. It's not going to affect your health. But the power levels that it would have to operate are so great. You have a, um, uh, more of a threat from your micro, uh, from your microwave, your Bluetooth, and your wifi than you would from five G. It is a very low-powered, um, energy source that, uh, has a very high attenuation. Attenuation is how fast it um, is absorbed by things. It won't penetrate buildings. It will not penetrate leaves, will not penetrate your clothing. It will. Penetrate the top layer of your skin. Your skin has multiple layers and it's the top layer of the skin where it could. Um theoretically uh cause um. A a malignancy is what they're the theory is. Uh but they did some experiments by getting a very high power. Um transmitter right next to people's skin to see if you could detect even heat radiation coming off and it and. Hundreds of times more powerful powerful than the five G. It it did warm the surface that the transmitter was by. Um the reason why I'm giving you all this information is because I I I heard your concern. I really did. Um I'm not. There in terms of it it's something I wanna, the sky is falling. Let's stop this five G. I think there's a lot of. Benefits to five G. I'm more concerned with, you know, how it might affect property values. If, you know, the small cell towers are put on somebody's uh property or in an easement. That would be my. Greater concern than the dangers from um the transmission risk. Uh it the the science, it just doesn't support that it's it's a very high threat to our health. Um just please consider that as we go through the voting process.
Yeah, so Rusty.
Yeah, yeah, David.
Rusty, to your point, um so that's basically like millimeter wave technology. So that wave is less than your four G and three G cell phones. So it's also non-ionizing radiation. And if you've been to the airport and you've stood in the little deal and put your hands up and it spins little things around you. That's you're getting blasted with millimeter wave every time. So as far as the health concern portion goes, I'm not really concerned about that. Um and and yeah, as you said. That millimeter wave, it does not penetrate well. That's why they need to be every five or six hundred feet. Um as well, and they don't penetrate well, uh you know, on thick on heavy surfaces. Whereas old cell signals, you know, old cell phones did so. Um but as far as the health concerns go, I'm not really concerned about that.
You counsel anything further?
Just any discussion on concern uh other than the health. Does anybody have any thoughts on, you know, these things could pop up every five hundred feet?
Yeah, yeah, the uh I did, but the ordinance is got. Whole bunch of design standards. They have to hide it, has to look like a tree. So I'm pretty comfortable with that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Suzanne, do we have a we do have a public comment, don't we?
We have two.
Okay.
Uh we'll start with more uh Maureen Johnson, who's been very patient.
But Robert, I I do appreciate you bringing that to to my attention because I didn't know. I'd heard. You know, negative things and I wanted to research where's that coming from and that's what I found out.
Thank you. Yeah, there's I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I did some research too. And your five G small towers are actually more potent against people. And the the jury is out on that. I do have a question for all of you to start out and it is. Do you have insurance for damages for long-term exposure to the radial frequency radiation, R F R? And I, do you know? Do you know?
So when we have public comment, typically we don't have back and forth between counsel and the person making the comments. And if there's a question, we usually leave that for staff.
Okay, then I'm gonna answer it. It says that I believe from what I've figured, I have researched that. It's an uninsurable risk. And the jury is out on this. There are legal liabilities. And financial risk of five G wireless cell towers, especially the small cell towers. There are hea- health risks to humanity and to plants and trees and animals. And um I have a couple of website references. It's one is called E H trust dot org and it has. Tons of information from other countries who have already entered into this and are already. Overwhelmed by the lawsuits. And this E H stands for environmental health. And then there's another one called. Me uh E H trust dot org, America out loud dot com. And there are other references, but I just kind of got on this the other day. I was trying to decipher. Everything you've been doing and reading the paper and. You know, you were referring to him just as cells and I thought, now wait a minute, what the heck? I had to go through a few of the newspapers. To get a reality on that. And then I thought, should we really be focusing? Of course, I guess that's what their law said. On the aesthetics for placement of these and how many are there gonna be? I mean, I don't know, ninety-five? I'm not supposed to ask questions, but I that's an answer I need. Um or would this be a five G mass experiment? And we've been exposed to that. Kind of stuff in the last two to three years. And I'm not willing to go into that. The radiation from these small cell antennas is not small. And each installation can have more than a thousand antennas that are transmitting simultaneously. They increase the electromagnetic radiation near homes. Um they also drop, they do drop the property values of your homes. And that that means something. I'm a homeowner here. And the uh they cause physical effects. Now, this research also on that first side I mentioned. Other countries and they can be uh mounted on. All kinds of places like on the lights, streetlights, trash cans, utility poles, bus stops. Rooftops and stuff. I for one, I wouldn't want them disguised. I want to know where they are so I can avoid them. And our our townspeople need to know the risks. We are known as the city above the clouds, but from what we've learned in the last few years. I don't really want to be a city in the clouds of not knowing. All the information that we need for all this. It's gonna be all over our wonderful Woodland Park, Colorado. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-five. So we have been programmed to quote, trust the science. But we have learned that in the past two to three years, we need to do our own research. And so I propose that this ordinance needs to be on hold till more studies have been completed. Because I don't know about the rest of you, but I no longer want to be a part of any experiment. So, oh, one more thing, but I had it go by. You have your ordinance thing. I should have read that sooner. Number two, do you have that in the number two? It it explains that we have the right for the police to make laws. According to this bold ordinance that our police can enforce. So it's on your uh. Main thing, which I let it die and I didn't get this. I was gonna read that to you in case, yeah.
That's okay. And Maureen, your your time is up, so we we appreciate.
Yeah, but that is on on your one of the ordinances. It's the second one.
I think it's the charter that she's referring to, yeah. Thank you.
Uh we have someone on Zoom named Linda.
Okay.
And I think Sarah will promote them so they can speak. Thanks, Sarah. I just need a a last name for Linda.
Martin, M A R T I N.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I want to thank um city council member Zula Waga. For stepping forward and being very familiar with what's going on in our country right now. I don't think we need to lead blindfolded. Um you have. Issues going on right now with whales dying on the east coast because we're putting in. Windmills in the ocean and they can't hear the frequencies of their mates or their babies. So they have whales washing ashore on the east coast. I'm sure you guys are familiar with that. Um council member Neil mentioned that he reviewed stuff through the World Health Organization. I know that I'm familiar with what that organization. Has done to this country in regards to COVID and vaccinations. So I wouldn't really put their word very highly on the list of recommendations. Um lastly, I would hate the idea if we put these these towers. Throughout our town, what's gonna happen to the deer here, the wildlife? If these winter, if these towers have the same effect on deer that they have on whales. And although I know many would like deer population control in this area. I would hate to start finding dead deer in yards because the babies can't hear their moms or vice versa. So I think this could be very detrimental to this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, anyone further?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna just allow Nina to clarify one thing.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to clarify that um this ordinance is not um. Permitting something that's not already permitted. So um it's not you guys sanctioning that you're allowing. It's not, it's it's just. The most restriction that you can do um within the city limits. I don't think there's been any applications for these yet. Not to say they're not coming, but. Um because they're coming, we were trying to protect the city. So just for the public sake, this is not um permitting something that's not already permitted under federal and state law.
Mayor.
Sure.
Uh I spoke with Nina uh earlier about the possibility of. Uh I recognize where my colleagues may well be on this, but I. I suggested that we remove the language, which is kind of cookie cutter language of public health, safety and welfare. Because this really is not something in good conscience we can say is for the best of our public health, safety and welfare. So if we removed all of those like that language from these ordinances, um does it still? Uh give us the ability to later uh discuss the possibility of. Uh whether we want them and whether we want it because none are here yet, whether we do want to take it further, take the discussion further. And we don't put ourselves in a position of liability when we've told the people that we're doing this for your public health, safety and welfare.
You know, that's not a bad suggestion if it if it's possible, in my opinion. Um Linda Martin is was very correct about the who it although it's a medical organization. It's very political, which is why I did other research uh and and I am very familiar with NIH. Uh I do follow what NIH puts out extensively. Um but Robert, I think your point, the the literature does say. That they can't draw a definitive correlation one way or the other. And since they can't. Definitively say it's. It's causing something, you know, it's the null hypothesis, then they defer to. Uh we're gonna consider it safe. So uh you know, removing some of that language, I think. Is not a bad idea. I don't know what the other council members think about that, but.
Can then make a motion to have that strict uh the languaging of.
That one.
One public health, well, it's in multiple areas.
Well, what Nina, is it okay if we do that? Or do we do we set ourselves up for something down the road?
No, you can make amendments. I'm just looking uh if we look at all the places where it is. So um I um. To remove that language doesn't doesn't wouldn't change the legality of the ordinance. I just want to make sure. Um everywhere that it would, that's the case.
Take your time.
I mean, we're yeah, removing, I don't think we even put it in the whereas.
It's in whereas tough. Um second one, the.
I'm just gonna briefly say a caveat to that language is that the five G helps our officers communicate faster.
I'm not against five G.
I know, but when you're tr- trying to remove the language, health, safety, welfare, so on and so forth, it's also for the betterment of law enforcement, for the ambulances, fire and police. To be able to communicate with their electronics faster and. The thing about this entire issue is it doesn't, you know, I'm sure all of us can probably agree that cell phones are not safe for us, that there's. Something we're using right now at this very moment is probably causing cancer for one of us, if not all. But the thing is, is this is already state and federal law. We don't get to say no. If we say no, we get a giant lawsuit that we can't afford to fight. So if you want to manipulate the language, go ahead. It really doesn't do anything but waste time.
It it won't change the um effectiveness of this ordinance, um nor do I think there would be. Any liability that the telecommunications company would say if you remove that language, this is not um the restrictions we need to follow. That's my thing.
And Nina's whole point of it being federal and state law is we swore to follow the federal and state laws. So we are doing that by permitting this. It is an unfortunate thing that local. Government doesn't have any sense of control over this such thing, but that's the way it is.
Well, and and hang on, folks, because there's more coming.
Well, yeah, but we are. That's the whole thing. It's it's we, the people, you know, the government is there to do our bidding.
Constitution is also we, the people, and this is federal law.
Yeah, but all laws that come, just because they make a law, doesn't make them lawful. They're legal, but they're not something that you can't challenge. You could, you know.
We can challenge this, but we can't afford to.
Well, we could find somebody who's an advocate for, you know, that's like, it's not saying that.
And and we can fight that outside of this ordinance.
Right.
If there it is a fight to be had, I would suggest. That maybe Robert, you lead that charge and it sounds like you've got folks to help you do that and you probably have more than we've heard for from. I would agree. Um we've got more mandates coming that are gonna be very significant.
Yeah.
And and so there are those of us that are working towards having our voice better heard with regards to those things. And this council and Rob, Michael mentioned it to you all in his report. And I I think that this is an opportunity and that will be coming forward in future. That's how we attack these kinds of things at this dais with this ordinance. Is probably not the forum with which to take on that fight. And so I would suggest that we do that in a in a more organized fashion, if you will. Um if we were to change that language, just to get back on topic. If we were to change that language, that could be done in the motion to approve this ordinance with those amendments. Yep, do you follow?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, does that make sense? Does that help? Because I hear you.
Yeah.
I hear you.
Good, yeah.
Could I just say something? And and just for me to be familiar with this, this just establishes a procedure for application review, correct?
Correct.
So anytime during that application review, we can go, no.
Well, administration.
I know, but I'm just saying, we can make it difficult and make sure that it's in the right location and then it's. Pretty and then it's not gonna affect the whales.
That's why I wrote the, that's why I wrote this ordinance, yeah.
The whales.
How about the whales?
I'm sorry, they do.
So this is, this is establishing procedures. This is not advocating or.
Absolutely. Just to establish procedures.
Supporting or anything else. It's a review process. That we're putting in place for something that is already permitted, already permitted.
And and if I may, I would add that this is actually the city being as proactive as it can. You have a procedure in place before these small cell companies come pounding down your door. And forcing you to do it and make making up a legislative process, a a planning process on the fly, which this happened a lot. So credit credit to Nina um for being proactive and putting this in place. You you may not like it, but this is this is the best we can do for now um before we get dictated to by the companies. Um and there there is a certain amount of time that applications have to be reviewed and approved or sent back. We are limited indeed.
Do we have, we took public comment? I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen thirty-nine series twenty twenty-three is presented.
I'll second.
So we're not doing any amendments to it?
I'll take it back.
And and to uh. Acknowledge my council members' comments to remove the health, safety and welfare language from the ordinance.
Can we just say health and safety? Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Does that work for you?
That works for me. I'll second.
Are you comfortable with that, Robert?
Kelly's motion. Thank you. Uh it it will not change my vote, but thank you because I think it'll protect us as a as a city.
You're welcome.
No, 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 no. No, no, no.
Nina, for clarification for the record, we're removing public health and safety, but leaving.
Correct. We need a basis for the ordinance. Yes, thank you.
Make sure that doesn't affect our police.
Exactly. Welfare takes care of it with the police.
Just make sure.
Okay.
We like to make awards sometimes.
Council, you may vote.
Thank you.
And then I'm gonna go ahead and let Nina also bring up ten C.
Thank you, council. Motion has passed six, one with council member Zuluwaga voting no.
Okay.
All right. So now that you have passed that ordinance, now this is a resolution to impose fees on these, which you would not be able to do if you didn't pass that ordinance. So it's just a simple update to your fee schedule. And this is the maximum that you're able to charge for small cell eligible facilities, five hundred per application. And then for standalone facilities, a thousand dollars per facility. And this is to compensate this, the city staff for their time and administrate, you know, to reviewing and administrate, you know, going through the administration of the application.
Council, any questions or comments?
So we're, we're skipping ten B and going straight to ten C.
Oh, sorry, ten B was removed from the agenda.
So the, the bottom line is, it's for the initial one that you're calculating, it's about a ten grand in, influx into the city. Just processing, basically processing fees.
Well, a thousand dollars for a facility, um, would you, what's meaning?
Well, Michael. So we, we had theorized earlier this week about what would the fees look like for the city. And then the answer is it depends very much on how many small cell facilities there are. There, there are no pending applications that I know of for small cell facilities. Usually these things have to be every five hundred or six hundred feet for density. I have no idea. We, we said if there's X amount, there would be ten thousand dollars in fever. I, I can't remember how. Yeah, we, we said if they were around, along eight miles of highway twenty-four theoretically. Roughly, that would be maybe ten thousand dollars by this metric. Please don't hold me to that.
And it's, the two most likely paths would be twenty-four and sixty-seven. We don't see them spreading into where, where the people live too far, correct?
Right, yeah.
We don't know, but.
Just, we, we don't know. And I, I kind of more the, the purpose of this is that it's meant to be cost right over. We, this is from what I recall, this is not a B. We, we are unlimited again by federal law or state law and the maximum fee we can assess.
I, I believe we took that into consideration and at least now you could charge to get to recoup those administration fee costs.
Yeah, the city would not make money off of this. It would just be to recover administrative time.
It would be illegal to do so.
Right, yeah, we can't, we can't profit from that.
But at least definitely in place now, because if you didn't have, well, if you pass it, if you never, it's in place, you know, you wouldn't have ability to charge for these fees.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but council can amend these resolutions and fees.
Yes, every council.
As needed. Yes, yes. Thank you. I will make her.
Is there, hang on one second. Is there anyone signed up for C?
No.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I will make a motion to approve resolution nine hundred, series twenty twenty-three as presented.
I'll second.
Council, you may vote. Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously. Mayor.
Yes.
May I just, for the record, we didn't state earlier on in the meeting that ten B was deleted. If we can just explain.
Absolutely.
Would you like me to, or do you?
Uh, you, you're welcome.
Ten B was removed from the agenda because it was part of Kip's initial presentation for resolution number eight ninety-nine. It was included in there, the contract. We, we had listed it twice.
It's just redundant.
Thank you.
Yes, but we're off to you guys.
Reports.
It's nine oh two. We're not taking a break. We're, we're crushing through this, okay?
Crushing through.
I'm in no rush.
I have no reports. Councilmember Case.
I have nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you. I'll have more another time.
Councilmember Congress.
Yes, I have one thing. I met with the community partnership people and we brainstormed about veterans assistance. So it's an ongoing process. That's pretty awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nakai.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Neil.
I do have the DDA report from February seventh. Of interest, there was a couple of topics that the DDA approved. The first one was the AJ Pizza had come back asking for a TIF amount. There's some interesting situation. They have not, they had not been issued a certificate of occupancy, which means they had not officially completed the, the construction. So we honored their TIF request and the board voted for a maximum TIF amount to AJ's Pizza of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. There was also a TIF request by the human being, the car wash, in which there, there is some the language in the contract that was signed by the DDA and with Mr. Taylor, Dan Taylor, specifically talks about property, but it doesn't identify whether it's real property or personal property that was supposed to be included in the TIF reimbursement. There's a fixed amount that was approved. But there is evidence that supports Dan Taylor's assertion that it was supposed to have included personal property and not be based solely on real property. The chairman and myself met with Dan Taylor in a separate meeting and we requested that Mr. Taylor give the DDA until March, the March twenty-third DDA meeting to do some follow-up investigations. He has presented artifacts that we want to share with the board that would support his position. He has graciously said he's not going to pursue anything until March. And that gives the DDA time to focus on that particular thing, but just to know, he has provided evidence that does tend to support his position, that it should include personal property as well as real property. The DDA did create and pass its first resolution in the history of the DDA, and it has to do with the proper posting of meetings. So that is resolution number one and resolution number two, which also passed, which was an update to the bylaws. Our attorney actually went through the existing bylaws and pointed out there were significant changes in DDA bylaws, and he brought many suggestions that the DDA board members had never thought of before. They were all great suggestions. So the, the board unanimously, unanimously approved an, an updated bylaw for the DDA. That's resolution number two. And that's all I have for my council report for the DDA.
Good, very good. Councilmember Otte.
I have nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Zuluwaga.
Keep Woodland Park beautiful. Met last Thursday. They're working on revisions to the bylaws. Working on design concepts for the median on twenty-four, going through town with a type of maintenance, which is maintenance-free, the type of designs, animals, trees, all sorts of things like that, flowers even, that are no maintenance. Would that be accurate, Grace? Yeah, okay. And just talk about the cleanup sitter are, as we move into the spring. And I can't give you the dates for that, but we'll let you know. And I believe that's about all that we, that's all this pressing. Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Robert. What?
I'm gonna have a go back.
Okay.
Robert, Michael, I'm gonna, if you want to help follow up with this. I just wanted to report to the council that Michael and Suzanne and I, we could go Friday, went to a, it was last Friday, went to a breakfast with our legislators. We were invited by the mayor of Fountain and the mayor of Monument to attend a breakfast meeting with Senator Gardner was there, Senator, the minority leader, Ms. Lundine. And our representative, who what used to be the mayor of Monument, he is now our state representative, Mr. Wilson. And again, those cities, we, they have hired a lobbyist. The two cities to ha- help have smaller communities have more of a voice to be heard by those in the state house, speaking of our conversation earlier. And the, the topic, main topic of conversation at that breakfast meeting, and this was coordinated through PPACG. The biggest topic was local control and that infringement and that intent to infringe on land use, zoning, all of those different things that really are unique to different communities and different areas of our state. And so it's, it's our, Mr. Basely and Ms. Luck were unable to attend. But we had a really great conversation and it was intended for us to see and experience. Unfortunately, the mayor could not attend that day because of prior obligations, but she was going to be there as well. To really kind of work together as communities and sharing the cost. And they were gonna, they're gonna come and share their experiences with, working with this gentleman. His name is William Much. And so it was a great conversation and it was good to hear some approaches that need to be looked at, one of them being the Colorado Association of Realtors, of which I'm a member and intend to become more engaged with that voice as they are being heavily influenced by the Front Range Boulder Denver folks. So more to come on that, but I wanted to share that because it's really very exciting and to hear some positivity and the conversations being had about that local control issue that is so prominent right now. So look forward to more on that and to hear from our fellow mayors and managers from those two communities. Michael, you can chime in anywhere you'd like to with what that, what.
I think Nina goes first, but I will do that.
I don't have a report. Thank you. Unfortunately, I'm not as funny as my partner, Jeff Wilson, so I apologize. Hopefully I'm still capable in your, all your eyes. I do hope I become funny one day. In my head, I am.
I'm not either. Don't ask. I'm not either. Don't ask. So Mayor Protem Case touched on it very nicely. We, we did have the legislative breakfast. We had three members of our state legislature. All, all Republican, they, they gave us their perspective. Those are representatives and senators from El Paso County. We have different representation, Senator Basely and then Representative Luck. And so what, what we are thinking is how might Woodland Park and cities like Woodland Park have a better voice in Denver at the Capitol? There is an increasing frequency of legislation being proposed that severely impacts local control. There's a big, big push that we're hearing about, very well substantiated about the state stepping on, on our land use and how cities do their own land use. Things that have classically been cherished as a local control matter more than anything else, really. And you, you start to see this dynamic of things being more frequently of statewide concern. And that is being used to make all sorts of legislation. And so cities of, of all sizes have concerns about that. We are but one small city among two hundred and seventy-two across the state. But we can amplify our voice. We can have access to legislature, legislator members to committees and can perhaps even speak into those committees to give the Woodland Park perspective, the Teller County perspective. And so that's something we do not have right now. We do have PPACG. We do have the Colorado Municipal League, but they represent all sorts of cities. They represent Woodland Park, but they also represent Denver and Boulder. Sometimes we see eye to eye with those cities, sometimes we don't. And so in those areas, we can amplify their voices or we can be the rural voice. One of the other dynamics that we, that came loud and clear to me was the continued tension between the urban and rural communities in Colorado. Because the metro area carries so much weight, the front range, it sometimes marginalizes the rural voices. We sometimes are in the rural camp, sometimes we're not. But you, there is a lot of sensitivity and the state has not figured out this divide yet. And so we, we can more, more accurately speak to our unique situation. If we were to increase our legislative advocacy efforts, is what you would call it. So I think to Mayor Protem's point, we, we are working on a, a draft framework to come to you with on how we might do that. Legislative session, which ends in the middle of May, but we'd be ready to go for the next legislative session, twenty twenty-four. And this issue is not going to go away, so.
And just to echo on that one more point is this will complement what the county's doing and their efforts with Mr. Williams and Mr. Stone. I think it's very much complements their efforts as well.
Absolutely. The commissioners have been very effective and very active in advocating for local government, especially for Teller County. Counties are a distinctly unique form of government, separate from municipalities. So sometimes we have common interests, sometimes we do not. And so there is, while they're doing a great job, they're not going to cover us all the time, although I, I think they usually have us in mind, which we appreciate. But very, very much kudos to our county commissioners in Denver. A somewhat lighter and fluffier note, the snowplow naming contest. No, fluffy, fluffy. That sounded very good. We gotta do better if you want to win. Snowplow, snowplow naming contest. It's cute, it's cute. You are, you are when, you're a winner and, and here, and here, Frank. The, the, the snowplow naming contest closes up next Friday, February twenty-sixth. Suzanne has submitted an entry. I don't know if she wants to share it.
I saw this. I copied it from Canada. I didn't actually submit it because I copied it, but I saw one that was entered. It was called Schools Not Cancelled. That was the name of the snowplow. I loved it. I thought of all the little kids as the snowplow drove by with that name on it.
And, and when we saw the picture that you could see the snowplow driver going like this to all the kids at the bus stop. They're, they're throwing snowballs. So that closes February twenty-sixth. We're having a lot of fun with that. I think we have approaching, approaching eighty submissions so far. Huh? Hundred. That's some steep competition. Three snowplows. So one of those being safe for the kids, so. Anyways, we're, we're having a lot of fun with it. Credit to Grace and Kristen for putting a fresh approach on government. We, we appreciate, we can have fun too. And then if Mr. Wiley wanted to give that quick reservoir update.
Absolutely. Let's see. We met with the Boy Scouts, geez, this week, last week, it all blends together. Just to make sure we're all on the same page with some things. Nina and her staff has provided a legal, a legal update on, I'll say some paths forward. So next steps are to get the attorneys face to face, if you will, to see if we can be, have some kind of common ground before we come to council.
Wow.
Right.
Wow.
Is there a timeline? Projected timeline?
For that meeting, I'm hoping within the next two weeks. So.
We might need a contest for that one, too. And then, and then finally to bring it home, we have Aaron with a Um, and then, and then finally to bring it home, we have Aaron with a, uh, uh, long overdue sales and lodging tax update. We appreciate your patience while we got all of our numbers sorted.
All right. Uh, well, these actually are not overdue. These, these are fresh. We have, um, actually through December.
Are they fluffy?
That's one way to get a rate. No, I just didn't, I just didn't wanted to think that these were old. These are through December, so these are fresh, end of January numbers uh, that we had year to date here. So December, year to date, we were up seven point six for the year, which was five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars two thousand twenty-two over two thousand twenty-one. Um, and month to date, we were up one point eight percent December twenty-two versus December twenty-one. Um, so pretty flat for, for that month. Uh, we kind of saw that throughout the year and we'll see that in the next slide where we had months that were way over and then we had a lot of months that were kind of flat, so. Um, and then lodging tax, we were up thirty-nine point one percent year to date, which is a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars more than the previous year. Uh, but December was almost fairly flat, three point seven percent up, which was only a thousand dollars, uh, year to, for that month to date. Um, and as you can see in this slide, um, pretty much every, the, the dark blue line is two thousand twenty-two. And you can see that pretty much every month, we were a little bit over what we were in twenty-one and twenty-one was much over what we were in twenty. Uh, but we did have a few months that really stuck out. We had August, September, October that were kind of way up there. And then a lot of the other months were kind of flat. November was a little down, December was a little up, so. It kind of, we would love to see it up every single month, but we did have a couple of months that were kind of flat, so. That was interesting to see. We'll have to see how that continues. Um, when we look at how we budgeted in our budget this year versus what we actually had and our unaudited numbers that we have here, uh, we received five million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand and we had budgeted five million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, so we had fifty-nine thousand dollar. It's more than we had budgeted in the budget, which is good, healthy. We were one point oh eight percent over of the budget, so we were very close. Um, I did those projections in August, so I like to see that it was, it was pretty close there. Um, and a little bit over, so that's good.
Good job, Eric.
That's.
Do you want us to clap?
No, that's.
You too.
It's, it's good that we don't have a deficit on that, so that's good. Um, and then we have our, our lodging revenues. You can see pretty much every month, it's, it's the light blue line. We were way up January, all the way through August, it was tremendously up and then we kind of got a little bit more aligned, October, November and December. It wasn't up quite as much as it had been, so. Another thing we'll have to, to look at, but tremen- tremendously up, uh, year to date, they're thirty-nine percent. And then we just have all of the tenure data for the three percent sales tax and the lodging revenues. Any questions or anything? All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. And all right, because you twisted my arm and we're talking about snow. How do you find Will Smith in the snow? Easy, just look for his eyes.
Oh, you know. Push the button. Push the button.
You look for the fresh prince?
You look for the fresh prince. I love my staff so much. That is all I have.
With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. It's the only reason I need that. I posted.